Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for the Canyon City Planning Commission for September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Can everybody stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can you call roll, please?
I sure will. Good evening. Chairman Grantham.
Present.
Commissioner Bellantoni.
Present.
Commissioner Troutman.
Here.
Commissioner Martino is excused, absent. Commissioner Embry. Commissioner Gill.
Here.
And Commissioner Frida.
Here.
Can we have the approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held on August eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen? Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I make a motion that the minute should be approved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Gill.
Aye.
Commissioner Troutman.
Aye.
Chairman Grantham.
Aye.
Commissioner Bellantoni.
Aye.
That's it.
I'd like to open the public hearing for the Eastern Fremont County Trails Open Space and River Corridor Plan. The provisions of the Canyon City Municipal Code, and in particular Title Seventeen thereof, the subdivision and development regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the Canyon, or the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this hearing as if set forth verbatim. Terry, can we have proof of notice, please?
Yes, sir. Public notice was published as required by law.
You. We're here to make a recommendation to the City Council for the open space plan. Would the president, would the staff or the Recreation District representatives please make a presentation? Or have anything, any comments to say?
If I can start. Some time ago, you know, the city and the county Recreation District and various others, I think going back to into the nineteen nineties, and Jim, correct me if that's wrong, but ninety-seven or something like that adopted a Eastern Summit County Trail Plan. Is that the correct date, correct year?
Ninety-seven was the last plan, yes.
Ninety-seven. And so that plan obviously has been in place, and you typically on plans where you're trying to guide the community and the future of the community, you typically take a look at those every five years or so and look to see if they need to be updated and what changes need to be made, and were you being successful or not successful, whatever the case may be. And so it has been some time since that effort has really been done. And the Rec District, to their credit, I think, put the community together, brought the community together here recently with the idea that we begin to take a look at the Eastern Summit County Plan. It was really good timing. The city had just worked with a group of recreationalists, bicyclists, to put together a bike plan for our streets in Canyon City. It's been very interesting. In the time that I've been here, I've noticed more and more people that are out walking, that are out riding bicycles. Certainly good things, and certainly we want to try to encourage that and help promote that idea. This group of bicyclists came together, began to develop a bicycle pedestrian plan for the community. Some of that has been implemented or started the implementation. The Rec District then came forward and said, you know, we really probably need to look at the bigger picture for all of Eastern Fremont County. And they brought together Florence, they brought together all the smaller communities, Canyon City, the county, many others. And I think over the course of time, they touched base in outreach with farmers and ranchers and ditch companies and, you know, unfortunately, through these kind of processes, you typically don't end up talking to everybody, but I think they've done as much as they could in terms of trying to get out and talk to the community about this plan and this idea. And so what we wanted to try to do tonight is, Jim probably is the best expert on this plan, to give him credit, and to have him come in and present the plan that has been developed through this community effort. Again, this plan goes from east of Florence to the Royal Gorge Park, north and south of Canyon City. So it's a pretty comprehensive approach, and I would also mention that we also have a Royal Gorge Park master plan that has been developed. That plan will sort of add to this one in terms of trail development within the park property itself, so it's kind of an add-on to what is being talked about here tonight. And so the goal is to try to present this, get community input from the public, try to answer any of those questions that might be out there, and to see if the Planning Commission feels that this plan should be recommended as a component of the city's comprehensive plan. And as you know, our comprehensive plan is sort of the future vision plan for our community on how we want to go forward as a community, things that we want to try to accomplish. And trails and recreation, obviously, I think that we've seen are an important part of the community's future, and so that's why we're here tonight, to kind of talk about that. So Jim, if we could maybe get you to get kind of a overview summary of the plan, we'd sure appreciate it.
And Doug, can you state who you are, so people in the audience, if they don't know who you are?
Just, yeah, for introduction, my name is Doug Dotson. I'm the city administrator here, so.
Thank you. Mr. Horr, would you like to step to the mic or sit right there and talk?
Sit here, work for you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. My name is Jim Horr. I'm the Executive Director of the Canyon City Area Recreation and Park District. And with me tonight is our Board Chairman, Ken Berger. And thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about this long project that has finalized, and as far as the plan, and now we're to the steps of putting it to work in the future. Doug is correct, the last master plan for this part of the county for trails was nineteen ninety-seven. So many of the grant agencies that the city, the Rec District, the city of Florence pursue, found our old plan to be outdated and not really valid anymore. We were fortunate as a group to go forth and apply for a GOCO planning grant that was awarded two years ago. And the group of agencies is the city of Canyon City, the city of Florence, Fremont County, the Recreation District, WKRP, which is Whitewater Recreation Park, and FAR slash Lambeau. All of those agencies or organizations put match money into that grant, and again, we were successful. The overall project costs eighty-one thousand, two hundred and five dollars. Of that, GOCO funded sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. And again, one of the key things here was putting our communities in a position to be successful with future grant funding for recreational amenities in our community. It really was about a two-year process. It's not over because we have what is called the Technical Work Group, which is made up of about fifteen to sixteen people. So there's representatives from all of those partner agencies plus Arkansas Headwaters Recreation Area, and we are meeting quarterly to coordinate what's going on in our communities with recreational features, and also to plan and coordinate grant funding and funding sources that will help us initiate new projects. The agency or the consultant firm that did the master plan was DHM Design out of Denver, Matt Whipple and Bill Newman. They also brought in a whitewater consultant, McLaughlin Engineering. So the three areas that we looked at principally were trails, open space, and river corridor development. And keep in mind, this was not from an economical point of view, it was from a recreational point of view. A big part of that goes hand in hand. As recreation develops, we believe the economics come with it. But because it was GOCO funding, it has to be focused on recreation. So we had three public meetings that were very well attended. We had one in Florence and two in Canyon. We also facilitated user group meetings with twelve different user groups throughout the community. And that ranged from trail users to river users to equestrian groups to OHV groups. And each one of those groups got to sit down and meet with the consultants in small groups where they were focused on, their interests, their activities. And recreation-wise, we have a lot of diverse recreation in our community. And so we have people that love to jump on an ATV, and we have people that love to use just their shoes to recreate. So this plan covers basically a hundred square miles, and Doug was correct, it's from the Royal Gorge to Blue Heron Park on the east side of Florence. And it goes basically from Red Canyon to the Gap on Oak Creek Gray. So it's a very broad area. Conceptually, we listen to any and all ideas the community sought us to look at. And so in the master plan, you're going to see a lot of references to arrows and directions. You're going to see lines across areas that are undeveloped, you're going to see lines across private property. Those are conceptual plans for future recreational features. One of the key things that we're very aware of is it takes cooperation between agencies, it takes successful funding, but first and foremost, it takes cooperation from landowners, whether that's agencies, whether that's private landowners. And private landowners, we recognize the rights of that, and there are many ways that you can establish recreational facilities with private landowners, whether it's easements, whether it's fee sample ownership, but it does take cooperation. And one of the other things in river corridor development is ownership on both sides of the river. If the Whitewater Park, which currently has two features now in Canyon City, is expanded, the thought is to go west, not east, and that will take ownership of the city, or the county, or whosoever jurisdiction it is in, to be able to create new features. The other thing that we looked at is hazards and new improvements on some of the diversion dams in this reach of the river. And there were six diversion dams identified, from hydraulic ditch on the far west to the Lester Atterbury Ditch on the far east, which is just east of Florence. And there's four of them in between. Those were studied through an in-river raft trip with a consultant, thanks to Raft Master providing that trip. And there was a lot of discussion in our public meetings as well as our technical work group meetings, is what we can do as a community, in the future, to make those safer for everyday users and to still provide the water right that the ditch company owners are entitled to. That's first and foremost. So the whole goal is to realize what's possible out there, what's realistic, and to bring the agencies together and try and set priorities, both for projects and for future funding. But to also coordinate our efforts to where we're connecting trails, we're connecting parks, we're connecting schools, but most importantly, we're connecting communities, whether that's connecting Canyon City and Florence, or whether that's connecting to the town of Brookside, or whether that's connecting to the coal towns. So when you look at this plan, again, there's a lot of concepts in here, and it's not intended to step on anyone's private property rights. It's only to say, in the future, someone may approach you about a possible trail across your property. We have no less than six landowners that we are currently dealing with, trying to either establish an easement or purchase property from them for future trails in and around Canyon City. Questions at this point?
Are there any questions? Go ahead. Is this your plan? Who's plan? Who owns this plan?
The community does, Preston. And I don't mean that trying to shy away from it. The city of Canyon City had four representatives on this group, Adam Lancaster, Rex Brady, Mike Pilo, and Doug Dotson, all participated in the meetings and continue to participate in a technical work group. Fremont County has a representative on, Commissioner Tim Payne. The city of Florence has three representatives on this committee, Mike Patterson, Wade Broadhead, and Charlotte Burris. Arkansas Headwaters Recreation Area has a representative, FAR Lambeau. The Recreation District was the principal sponsor of the plan because someone had to host the grant, someone had to take the process all the way through, which, yes, we did, but it's not our plan.
But to the point, who advocates for the plan? Do you understand that?
I would hope all agencies do. And I submit, no, I submit that to you because our board has adopted it, Fremont County has approved it, the city of Florence has unanimously adopted it. My understanding, one of the reasons we're here is to try and get the Planning Commission and the city of Canyon City to consider adoption.
In the case of a private property owner and wants to do, and this occurred, by the way, since I've been on Planning Commission, and the owner wanted to do something with the land. And when they came here, there was a trail that was supposed to have been there. We didn't approve it with the trail in it. So that became a problem with the property owner, in that the property owner didn't want to have the trail. We didn't either. So what we're doing when you're approving this sort of thing is you are putting some type of a gray area over top of somebody's private property. Who would advocate for that? I mean, who, do you have then the right to come in and say, we, no, 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 we want to, we would like to have the plan, we want a trail over this because of the plan? Do you understand?
I do understand. And we've met with many property owners successfully to develop trails across their property, and we also have some that we're working on. But you don't encumber anyone's property by a concept.
But it did in this case, and it has.
But can you give a more defined example of that?
Well, the property in question was out along, was Four Mile Creek, and there was supposed to be some kind of trail there, and they wanted to subdivide into smaller properties, a lot, to change it off. And when the city came in with their approval for the Planning Commission, it was asked to have that property owner for, to get that approval, for that property owner to give up that swath of land for a trail, a non-existent trail sometime in the future, which we didn't want. So all of a sudden, this concept became almost like a force of law in that you can have the subdivision, but you've got to give us the piece of land, and I object to that.
I can understand your objection. Let me ask you from a development point of view, when you look at other communities in Colorado, and you look at trails that literally run within ten feet of half a million-dollar homes, I would submit to you that many of those development, look at that as a benefit to the people in that development and add to the value of some of their properties. In Canyon City, we have the trail very close to some homes, but we also have our existing trails very far from homes. When you look at the broad reach of this plan, we go through areas that are just strictly agricultural use, open space, and we go through areas where we're close to homes, we're close to businesses. An example of that is the trail on Ninth Street and the Arkansas River Walk. That exists with two commercial businesses through an easement, and it's coexisted very well now for the last ten years. Many of those people that work in those businesses, at their lunchtime, go out and use that trail for exercise. There are a number of communities in our state that look at trail and recreational development as a plus, especially to residential development. And so why some people may look at it as encumbering their property, others may look at it as a benefit. And so I would say that would go case by case, and to me, that would be the case with any developments in this plan. It's going to be specific projects and specific land ownership. And so it has to take the cooperation of the landowner, or the project just doesn't happen.
It didn't in that case. If we wouldn't have denied it at the Planning Commission level, he would have been required to give up that piece of land, because all of a sudden, this idea became a way of getting someone's way, and I object to that. I think it's probably a pretty good concept. I mean, it's far-reaching. What happened to the old plan?
It's still there, but it's...
So what do we do? We pass the old plan, and we, what happens with the old plan? Does that go away if we make, I mean, I'm not trying to be a bad guy here, but all of a sudden, we're putting out all kinds of, what about the river plan that the city has too? We have plans upon plans upon plans. Are they competing?
No. I think that, as Doug alluded to, I think they enhance each other. This plan goes to the Royal Gorge Park, but the city contracted with another firm, R&amp;L, to pick up the plan where this one's ended, and R&amp;L has done further planning for the city within the park.
Again, I'm not...
And so the intentions are for the plans to enhance each other, not to work against...
Why do we know that?
But I think...
Have you seen this? Has it gone through both?
Which?
You have the city plan, and you got your plan.
We were involved with the city plan from public endpoint, point of view.
Well, Doug, in case of a resolution here, not to irritate anybody, but who goes first? Is that such a thing? Is that correct or not?
Actually, Preston, the way these work, when we were working with R&amp;L, the consultants, the Rec District, everybody was involved in that. We all went up there, we walked the park, we, you know, we discussed all of this. There was coordination between both of those plans. The point was is that this plan that we're talking about here really began to focus on the rest of the, I'll call it, the rest of the community. The park, we needed time, we were coordinating our efforts, but we needed time to think through things like, you know, should there be an amphitheater? Where's the right location for that amphitheater? How do the trails tie into that amphitheater? Should there be a lodge, no lodge, whatever the case may be? So we spent a lot of time trying to flush those things out, but the plans are intended to overlap each other. Now, coming back to your question about the piece out on Four Mile Ranch, you know, I think as Jim has pointed out, the intent here is to create a guideline, so that hopefully people can sit down and try to work together. There may be cases where that just cannot happen. Somebody may have a different interest or different purpose for their property, and so we try to figure out, you know, how to work around that, and we would need to do that. There are things in the state law called development exactions, that for example, and they're used throughout communities throughout Colorado, and that's how many of these communities are getting all these trails that they are getting, where if a property owner comes in and says, hey, I want to upzone my property in effect, so I'm going to go beyond the current zoning, the communities will in effect trade off that additional zoning for, you know, maybe a trail. That's something that we can or don't have to do. That's going to be up to the City Council. And right now, that's not on the books. So this is intended strictly to be a guideline at this particular point in time, and if it goes beyond that, the council and the community would make that decision. But it gives the community the opportunity to sit down with a particular land developer and say, hey, what can we do?
Well, what was accomplished with the old plan? Was there anything, what was, could you just, a few...
That's a great question. A lot was accomplished. When you look back to the early nineteen eighties, when the River Walk was proposed, it was welcomed in the community by some, and it was hard fought by others. And there was a lot of challenges by the district and the city when they came up with that concept. When you look at the ninety-seven master plan, a lot of it has been implemented. When you look at the extension project that recently the city completed going out to the college, that was a portion of that plan. And one of the key factors in that extension project was successful grant funding to complete that project. And when you look at that, you have to look at the opportunity out there for grants. If you have an antiquated plan that grant sources will not recognize, you reduce your chance in a very competitive process of getting successful grants. Without grants, the Arkansas River Walk would not have been extended beyond Centennial Park. Thanks to the efforts of the city of Canyon City and all the people that were involved in that, we now have a trail that goes to the college, and now it extends up to Tunnel Drive and connects to Tunnel Drive. But the only reason that that was accomplished was through successful grant funding and partner funding, but the partner funding was probably twenty, thirty percent compared to sixty, seventy percent of the project funding. So as the grant agencies tell you, your master plan needs to be updated. But the other way to look at this is, the interest in our community, as our community changes, as Doug said, we need to update our plans. The hogbacks at one time were used by Jeeps and four-wheel drives, and I had a lot of fun on it as a young man up there, tearing up country. But now the community has come back and said, we want it to be an open space, no motorized activities. It's part of this plan, but it has its own master plan because it's a project plan. And now you see improvements as a community in that area that let people walk, take horses in there, and utilize that open space, and so things changed from what they were back in nineteen ninety-seven. And we were at a position in our area, not just Canyon City, in our area, that we needed to update our plan and increase our chance of getting outside funding for projects in our community.
Okay, but in your plan, are there provisions for off-road vehicles?
There are. There certainly are.
Well, okay, just one last question, I'll quit being a pest. I'm leery. When we say resolution, John, what force does that have? We're recommending a resolution to the City Council, and then what?
Then council will consider your recommendation and either incorporate this plan into the city's master plan or choose not to do it, depending in part on your recommendation and depending on what council's independent thinkers think. The issue that came up in Four Mile was brought up because the Four Mile Trail was part of the ninety-seven plan, and it was the duty of the city officials involved, at least, to consider that and cause those who are decision-makers and recommenders to decision-makers to consider that the plan was in place and it called for consideration of a trail in that particular part of the world. As it turned out, this Planning Commission killed the concept, and very likely, unless there's a lot of change in ownership, killed that particular trail maybe forever. If you don't have the cooperation of the landowners, it doesn't happen. But what we would end up with if you recommend approval of the plan and the council adopts it is another guideline that's part of our master plan that sets forth certain things that, within the city and the reach of the city, the three-mile area, that ought to be considered in land use decisions. There are parts of this plan that cover eastern parts of Fremont County that will never be within our jurisdiction, and those portions of the plan won't depend...
won't depend on anything the city does to be implemented or not be implemented. But it, when the, the land involved is within the city or within the reach of the city, then there might be an occasion, based on the existence of the plan in the master plan, for decision-makers and recommenders to have, and, and certainly staff, to half-consider what the, what the plan says and bring it to the attention of, of the others, and then it's up to them to weigh the facts and make, uh, recommendations and determinations, which don't have to follow the plan.
Right. Well, I understand when, when a government entity such as the City of Canyon City owns the land, I understand that I'm very concerned about when it is covered in private property. That concerns me. Especially where you hold the gun to the head and say, "You can do what you want with your property, but you gotta do what we want." That troubles me. So, I'm done.
But during my time with the planning commission, uh, there's been two different situations that we've had to, uh, make decisions on. And, um, both of them were, well, one of them was an easement situation, um, and one of them had to do with a gentleman's front porch. Uh, in these two things, um, there was a condition put in there for them to do something that we felt was reasonable. There was a condition to put in there that they should put a certain amount of property, uh, over to Canyon City in order to accomplish what they wanna do. My concern, and it was very, very difficult for myself, and I don't know with other people, um, we actually continued one of those meetings to find out if we absolutely had to abide by those. I feel that if something's warranted and a zone change or an exception should be made, um, it shouldn't be with the, uh, with the threat or the, uh, requ- the requirement that they give up some of their personal property. And I could see where this might be, eh, down the road as we're trying to acquire this property or something, that it might be if somebody's just like, you know, we were talking about upzoning and this and that. I honestly don't feel that that should be on the table. I think that it should be, "Hey, this is what we wanna do with this piece of property." "Okay, that's fine, but you know, we wanna run a trail through here. Would you consider donating that to the city?" And that's a concern as we, you know, as we move forward with this. Um, like Preston, I'm very concerned about people's private property and us sitting here on planning, saying, "Well, yeah, that's what they said, man. You gotta give that property up to get what you want." And I just, I have a problem with that, and I just would really, really like to not see us put in that position as a city or as individuals, um, to have that, you know, put down as a rule in order for these people to get something that they're asking for that we feel is reasonable, with or without them donating this property or deeding this property to the city. That's a concern that I have.
Y'all have any questions? Is there anybody from the audience that would like to address the commission on this item? If so, please state your name, your address for the record. Those in favor go first, those opposed go second.
I actually have a list, because I think we have several people, so I'll bring that up.
Thank you. Don Lay?
Hey, first of all, I wanna thank the planning commission for the opportunity to, to speak on this issue. In the last three and four months, my wife and I moved into a new house, which borders Four Mile Creek. The reason we picked that location to build the house is, first of all, it was high enough to be out of the floodplain, and second of all, because of the beauty of Four Mile Creek running through our backyard. It's about a hundred, maybe a hundred yards from our back porch. If that had not been there, we probably would have built on a di- different piece of the property that's closer to utilities. But because of the aesthetics of that situation, that's what we chose to do. And as, when we purchased that property approximately three years ago, we had personal experience with the gray cloud over our head that Mr. Troutman talked about. My son and I bought the property together, and we wanted to just adjust the line and put a line down the middle of it, so we each had an equal amount of property. Everything seemed to go very well until the conditions for approval came out, and one of the conditions was, "You will donate a section of land along Four Mile Creek for a trail." We met with the city council, and fortunately, they agreed that that should not be there. I'm afraid if, if, if this plan goes through with the Four Mile Trail on it, that that's gonna happen down the line to somebody else that wants to develop their property. I, I understand that there's twenty-some landowners that you have to contend with from the Arkansas River up to the north where you're gonna, uh, meet the Red Rocks Trail. The other concern I have is, if I'm right, this thing is gonna cost two-point-four million dollars to just build a pathway for that three or four miles up through, along Four Mile Creek. I understand that, that, uh, a good part of that may be coming from donated money or grant money, but that money is still public money. It doesn't grow on a grant tree. It's money that they get from people somewhere that's gonna go to this, and I think we need to be a lot more responsible in how it's being spent. As you know, Colorado has it more or equal to the amount of public land available for recreation use than any other state of the union. And it looks to me like this money would be better spent going to developing public lands for recreation. Thank you.
Rick Shepard?
Thank you. I'm Rick Shepard. I appreciate the attitude of the committee here on the concern for private landowners, which I am. I own property south of Highway fifty along Four Mile Creek and north of Highway fifty along Four Mile Creek, two farms. And my concern is for our privacy and what we've tried to create over the years and our personal home being there for thirty-three years now, with Four Mile Creek running through the middle or close to the middle of one of our properties. And should one of these trails go through there, then it splits our property, and we have a lot of concerns, and I don't know how deep to be with you all tonight on my negative, uh, feelings towards the plan, but I just want you to know that I own a lot of acreage in the Four Mile area. Uh, I'm gonna oppose everything that comes along in master plan like this, be, for personal reasons, and, uh, I'm gonna be selfish. And the things that we've tried to create for our home and our grandkids and stuff, and the beauty of Four Mile Creek, I just don't wanna share. Uh, we stepped up and bought the property years and years ago, and that's our home. So that thought is a concern of mine. I've known nothing of this. I was involved with what Dr. Lay's sharing with you on the lot split, because I sold him the land. And since that time, I've not heard anything more, and maybe it's my fault, but I have not heard anything more about this master plan. I did not know about this meeting until I think it was last Friday, maybe Thursday. So nobody has ever contacted me, and I own close to a hundred acres or whatever along Four Mile Creek. So I guess I consider myself one of the larger landowners, but yet I don't know about what's going on. So those are some of the concerns I have. That in the future, I'd like to know the progress of what's happening that's gonna affect my land. Thank you.
J.D. Kraus?
Thanks for the chance to speak here. Um, I'm Rick's neighbor. He's my father-in-law. And we've been there along Four Mile Creek for, uh, seventeen years, and we've got to raise our family there as well. I have one question that is maybe beyond the scope of this, uh, meeting, but before I ask that, I wanna ask, John, could, could this condition, if, if this master pre- plan was approved by the city, could it be a condition for like a future improvement agreement? If, if there was a developer that wanted to develop the land that, uh, was to be affected by this master plan? And no matter where it is, Four Mile Creek or anywhere along the plan?
I think condition at, at this stage is the wrong word, but if, if a trails plan is part of the city's master plan, and it calls for a trail in a certain area of the city, if the land use people within the city, primarily staff in the beginning, notice those things, that connection, a trail plan affecting a property that's, that's before the city for some sort of, uh, relief or, or, um, or, or, or a grant of, of, of power or subdivision that the city has the power to grant, then it, it's likely it would come up for discussion and maybe even be proposed by staff. Again, the Four Mile example, that doesn't mean it's, it's, it's the law. Uh, the recommenders and then ultimately the city council has to make a determination as to whether it wishes to impose that condition. Existence in the master plan of a trails plan simply, uh, is done to ensure that where there are existing trail plans, the item is, is brought up and discussed. But the ultimate decision-maker within the boundaries of the city would be the city council, and outside the city, there are other governing bodies with that ultimate, uh, power.
Uh, Jim, I suppose the first step is to get the master plan approved for, for your guys' purposes. But the, the landowners here, I think, are, we're all saying, "We're afraid of supporting something like this," even though I love the trail along the Arkansas River and everything that has been done in the last few years. I think it's wonderful. I think that we're all just concerned that, um, if this master plan gets approved, that then there, there could be a council that could be very pro-trail, that would be, uh, opposed to the rights of public landowners. And I don't know that much about all of this, so it, do you ever get pre-negotiated deals? Like, do, do you ever go actually negotiate with the landowners prior to submitting a plan to the planning commission and then on to city council to approve the master plan? Is that unheard of, or is, is that reasonable for us to ask?
No, it's a reasonable question, and I think one of the things that I would try and, and bring back into focus is this is a master plan. And one of the things where you folks are talking about is where your property is, is Four Mile Creek. That's one concept trail of the whole broad plan. And to try and answer your question directly, yes, going to landowners initially to say, "Would you be interested in this?", which we were successful a year and a half ago, to a very large private property owner to say, "We would like to connect this spot to this spot." And the landowner was receptive. Says, "Sure, we'd like to develop a trail easement across your property." And he granted that easement. It was a purchased easement, because the property is basically open space. He bought it many years ago for the purpose of developing it. He's never developed it, but he still wants to own it. He saw where a trail would not harm his property, and it would connect two portions of our community. Uh, the one I'm talking about, not to be vague, is the Ecology Park to South Canyon. And it was across Walter and Gloria Shep's property, which they own approximately a hundred and sixty acres, which is comparable to some of the land in East Canyon. But these projects that are listed in here, and there's twenty-six of them, each one is a project within itself. So you have to look at those and say, "Okay, what are the issues? Is it ownership? Is it owned by the public? Is it privately held?" If it's privately held, then you need to start discussions early on. From our point of view, we are not a zoning agency. We're a recreation agency, so we don't have the power, the authority, nor would I see us ever exercising that, going out and saying, "You must give this to us." We don't have the right to do that under s- state law. The city's in a little different position. John, I hope can explain, or has explained that better. But we approach it a little differently, because we have to go in with a concept and an idea and have land ownership, or land owners cooperate. If we don't, it doesn't happen. So I gave you an example of the one on the, across the Shep property, and there are other examples where it hasn't happened. And so we've, we've given up that idea. And I'll come back to Canyon Creek, which was a development along Four Mile Creek. And we had early on discussions with the original owner, and we were talking about running a trail through there, and actually a river crossing that would enhance his development. We could not reach an agreement, so that trail went nowhere. And since then, the property has changed ownership, and I believe the development has changed. So we no longer pursue that. So, again, if you don't have cooperating landowners, we're not in a position, nor is that the desire of our board, to force anything. You can move trails, you can move projects, you can change projects. But for the possibility to have a project in the community, it's good to li- list it, the concept in a broad brush master plan. When you look at all these projects, each one, all the way around Canyon City, all the way to Florence, they all have their challenges. Some are dealing with state land that's owned and controlled by state agencies. That's not a slam dunk. Some of them are owned by federal land, and many parts of it are owned by private land. So, when you get beyond this master plan, you get into project planning. And that's what the city is working on in the hogbacks. An example of that, you didn't see much trail development in the hogbacks until the city was successful in acquiring a very key piece of property right in the middle of the hogbacks. And now you see that development going forward. And that's taken a lot of years to get there, and I would see the same thing happening in many of these projects. They're going to take many, many years to move forward with. And it does take private land ownership cooperation, not forceful, happening.
Thank you. Uh, just to finish that point for me personally, and I think a few that have spoke already, my, my ask to the planning commission would be that the Four Mile corridor piece of the trail, that, um, there wouldn't be any approval of a master plan until there was negotiation with the private landowners, so that we didn't have any gray areas sitting over us. Um, the question that would, might be beyond the scope of this, but I just wanna ask anyway, because it brings a point about liability. I recently got involved in a quarry that's, um, on, uh, Red Canyon Road, and I was up there on the property the other day, and I see that the BLM is just to the north of us, and they're actually flagging some trees. And, um, and I understand that Mr. Stock, who we purchased the property from, had been in negotiations or talking with the BLM. I'm assuming it's the same trail system. Are you, was BLM a part of this technical team that, of fifteen that you all met with?
The BLM has a representative that's been involved in the process, but they're not one of the listed agencies, because they're on, they operate off of federal lands, and they have their much more detailed planning and environmental review process. There were, they are doing some trail development, as you know, up in the Orwell Flats area and the dinosaur area, and they've made some new trails. I don't know what they have as part of their new process. The oth- the other thing, when you go south of town, you quickly run into National Forest property, and the National Forest, we did not extend into their planning area either. So, BLM has significant holding, which is addressed a little bit in this plan, on the west side of Canyon City for, uh, the south side of the gorge, and a little bit on the north side. And that's trying to coordinate future development coming off of the Royal Gorge Park.
So does this proposed trail that goes to Red Canyon Park, does it, uh, in theory, use the trail on BLM property and incorporate that?
I cannot answer that, J.D. I do not know. I don't know their... I don't know their connecting link to the BLM. I think that would be, conceptually, the idea is to connect the two in the future, but I can't tell you where they're at as far as their most southerly point.
My final thing is I think there's a significant amount of liability for some of these new trails, and I would agree with Mr. Lay that we have a lot of trail systems in the state of Colorado. And I was just hiking on Rainbow, where were we?
Where did we go, Rick?
Hayden Creek. And that trail could use some improvement, let me just tell you, because it kicked my butt. So, thank you.
Thank you. John Hammerick?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name's John Hammerick. I'm a Canyon City resident. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. At other times, you may see me representing one of the businesses here in Canyon City, but tonight, I'm just a citizen. I'd like to say that this master plan, obviously, there's been a lot of work that's gone into it. It's really a quality product. I think that the participants are to be commended for the amount of effort they've put into this plan. And there's a but coming. And the but is that if you look at the list of participants, I understand that for funding purposes, at least from some of the comments tonight from Mr. Horr, that the funding structure may have prohibited, or at least limited, business participation in the plan. And that seems to me a pretty big lack, that there are no business leaders nor business groups that were represented and participated on this plan. For instance, the Chamber of Commerce or the Fremont Economic Development Council. And I think that there are, you know, statements made in the plan that could have benefited very much from the presence of those individuals when this plan was developed. It is being stated that this is, this plan is guidance, and that the part of it, the main part of the plan was intended for recreation, recreational purposes. I would say, though, that from my perspective and my reading of the plan, that what it has gone from, from the recreational aspect into conservation advocacy. And I think that that's perhaps a flaw in the plan because it does not speak to any multiple uses or co-uses or complementary uses of private property that may abut the planned areas. And I think that that can bring several, you know, already it's been mentioned, some of the problems that can come with those types of situations when you have private interests that have private property. And just one thing I'd like to say, sir, you're not selfish, but you're just using your constitutional rights for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in property as you see fit. I would like to point out, there was a statement, statements in here that, a series of statements that bothered me greatly, and it's on page 28. This is in the guiding principles and components of this plan, and it's the last paragraph there, management considerations. It says, "There needs to be cooperative oversight between river quarter advocates and the public agencies to engage owners and business operators along the river and assure goals and standards of resource protection are maintained. This includes periodic site visits, review, and cooperative promotion." And from my perspective, the way that I would interpret that, that says to me that advocates for conservancy and the city government need to act together to approach private landowners for site visits and to ensure that their uses of their private property conform with this plan. And I think that's very concerning as guidance for members of our city governments. If that's the direction that they're given in this plan, I think that that is really a severe problem. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, Jim?
Mr. Chairman, if I could give an example to John's concern. When the community has come together and extended the Riverwalk, one of the first steps we took was from Sales Avenue Trailhead, where it currently is in the parking lot. And we've been successful in extending westward. When you look at the private ownership of some of that land that was acquired, fee simple, and some of it had easements go across it, some of our uses of that land in the past as a community were not something that we should be proud of as a community. So as we've done projects to extend the Riverwalk Trail in particular, we've done a lot of cleanup work. And we've done that through cooperation with the city and state agencies, and not at the expense of any private landowners. We've hauled off many, many loads of trash and debris that was neglected and left there. And that effort continues in the areas that we go into. But I can also give you examples of true cooperation between government and private business or private landowners. One of those is Black Hills Energy. We've worked with them numerous times in and around their property to go in and clean up the river stream and the riverbank with our projects, whether that's the extension of the Riverwalk Trail that the city completed a few years ago, or whether that's just going in as a community and working together to remove trash and debris and improve our natural resources. My interpretation of that paragraph is a little bit different than John's. Part of our job is valuing the resources we have here naturally, but also taking care of them as a community. One of the old standards for flood control was to go in and lash one-inch steel cable throughout the cottonwood trees along the Arkansas River. And most of that steel cable is eroded and decayed to the point it's a danger. And so we've taken out a lot of those old practices, whether it's either government or whether it was private business. But we've worked hand in hand with private businesses to improve the area along the river and along the new trail sections. And I would see that process continuing in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Javernik, can you please state your address for the record, sir?
Twenty-five Seventeen Cherry, I think. I live in Canyon. I hear all these positive things about Riverwalk and these trails. And all we've, as a family, my family owns the property where Four Mile Creek comes down, runs into the Arkansas, and it's a 65-acre chunks, that's right in there along the Four Mile Creek down the Arkansas. And all we've ever got of the Riverwalk is negative. We've tried to cooperate with Mr. Horr and remove things from the river that they thought were hazards, but we had a registered bull shot in the river off the Riverwalk. What we were told was get that bull out of the river. No effort to cooperate or solve the problem. We constantly have people walking up and down our side of the river, fishing, picnicking, whatever, they're coming down the river on their tubes. Oh, they own it all. The trail, then another thing, we were going to put in an operation where we were going to dig ponds for fish habitat and clean up decorative stone and sell it. Every person that walked up and down that Riverwalk signed a petition against us. There were people up and down on that roadway stopping everybody to get them to sign. We, hey, they see our farm there. They own it. If they see it, they own it. To give the government agency a proposed trail, I know that you say it'll never happen, but we know of cases it has, and it's just like an old rideaway on your property. Oh, that don't mean nothing. Yeah, just try and get rid of it. And it will cause future development. We've given, the city of Canyon has a three-mile reach beyond their city limits. You don't do nothing within three miles of their city limits, which are getting bigger all the time, without an okay from the city. Development, anything, if they decide, we like trails, the private owner, the private landowner, is going to be making deals, giving up land to get his deal. And I just, I, my personal opinion is draw anything you want on government ground, plan it on government ground, but keep it off us private guys, period. Thank you.
Mr. Slanovich, can you state your address for the record as well, please?
I live in Centennial most of the life, but I own everything south of Canyon City, and I have a house out at basically Oak Ridge Grade. So the address in Fremont County is 5852 County Road 143. So I'm not very organized as far as how to say this, but all of you guys, Jim Javernik, just said one thing that's really true, is you let anyone enter your private property, they decide that they own it. Your private property rights are gone once you let access to the public near it. So I have a real strong opinion about property rights and what's happening in this country now. I mean, it seems like everybody's going after the private property owner to give up their rights to use the property as they see fit. And on this master plan, I just saw this thing yesterday, they have these potential trails crisscrossing our property all over the place, over several thousand acres. We had no idea that anything like that was in the plan, and it is a stigma. Now, all the trespassers are going to see, well, heck, they don't do trails out there anyhow, so they're already going to be planning that that's going to be theirs to use. We spent $100,000 probably on building about 20 miles of fences to keep people off of our property, and we don't, we want to operate as a ranch and for mineral development and everything. Soon as someone else has the right to come onto that land, or they're going to criticize everything that's done on it. The private property owner is not going to be able to use the property as he sees fit. So I don't like the idea of seeing a potential trail across our property for everybody to see, because we've done our best to clean up the trash and keep trespassers off of it. And I don't see a trail as just opening it up for someone else to use. Trails across open land, I mean, in the cattle operation, they're going to disrupt anything being done in the cattle operation. It's going to disrupt the wildlife habitat. And so I guess there's a lot of things to go into it, but we are definitely opposed to having our land in the plan. So I guess that's about it. I think no one has ever approached us about it. We just see that they have trails crisscrossing our land over hundreds of acres or thousands of acres. And I would just say, we would be opposed to it. The idea of private property, in this country, it's getting really scary as to what's happening to the concept of private property. So thanks for your opportunity to say something.
Thank you. Smitty? If you could state your full name and your address, sir?
Ivan Smith, Sr., 3003 South Street. I think everything's been said, but I would like to say my concern is for the private property, of course. I have land adjacent to, Gus is just talking about preserving up there so that people don't walk all over the place and so on, and I have that same concern. Been taken care of up there. Actually, I don't know why anybody would want a trail across the property, but they might. But I think something we really need to look at, we visited a couple of cities this summer, a vacation trip, and ran into two really neat indoor swimming pools, actually indoors park, water parks, and not in bigger communities than we have right here. And I think maybe some of the money that we can get through grants or wherever you want to get it should be spent for the youth and the younger people and us old people to go to the swimming pool and enjoy indoors. And I think it's something we need to look at. And we've got a lot of trails, and we've got a lot of BLM, we've got a lot of Forest Service that we can use for that. I just don't think we should use the private property for that. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Rob Brown, 301 Greenhorn Drive. I'm a Canyon City resident. I'm here tonight as the representative for Fremont Economic Development Corporation. And this is the longest day of my life for my throat, so I apologize if my voice gives out. But nonetheless, first and foremost, I'm very impressed at the passion and the participation in a meeting like this. And I would encourage the people that are here tonight to look to other situations and issues in the city and in the county that you can get involved in with an equal amount of passion. We could use this amount of intellectual property that we have in the room tonight. I'm a proponent of outdoor recreation. I think it's a great idea, and I'm very intrigued with the possibilities that this may lead to from an economic development point of view. I think that's part of the overall fabric of a community is when they have these types of things to offer. The interesting part here, Fremont Economic Development Corporation, as you may or may not know, played a very active role and assisted Mr. Dotson in the city of Canyon City in acquiring the property that was in the hogbacks that we completed, helped to complete that trail system. So there are plenty of examples that I can give you where I think this is a great idea. In this particular situation, however, we have some unique challenges. And we have, one of our members, Zephyr Minerals, they have approximately 1,000 acres encompassing their holdings on Dawson Mountain. And they intend to employ 75 people, and they've been working in earnest for years on this project that will bring a great number of primary jobs, significant jobs, to our area. And this particular plan does involve them as a potential stakeholder. And they happen to be based in Nova Scotia, Canada. They, because of their distance possibly, but we're not aware of the plan, found out about it at the last minute, and I encouraged them to stay in Nova Scotia. I said, stay there, let me go speak on your behalf and make their point. Now, in that particular situation, I'm not here to ask the commission to either approve or deny this request. I think what the commission should do, in my opinion, is act as a leadership role and roll up their sleeves and work with the community organizations that have helped to develop this plan to resolve this situation. this plan to resolve this situation about the private property piece. I think this is a great example of collaboration, the work that's been done to this point. A lot of people have spent a lot of time and effort, and I think that that is exactly the kind of community spirit that we need. But I think we have somewhat of an impasse here where we have private property owners that feel like they're being infringed upon or the potential exists, and we have private business interests that have concerns. And I think we owe it to them to be good stewards of our community and take into consideration these things and bring them to the table in some discussion. And then, when everybody is properly notified and on the same page, then we can still proceed and figure out where we go next, whether that includes certain parts of it or not or whatever the situation is. But that's what I would encourage the commission to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak? Any commissioners have any other questions? Go ahead, Angela.
I have to say thank you all for coming, and that too often we sit in a vacuum here, and we are presented with ideas, and we don't have a whole lot of input from the community. So thank you for taking your time to come and express your concern. And I too concur, the passion is wonderful. Many of you know that my profession, my little company, oftentimes what I do is I'm standing on the other side of that microphone, and I am presenting to, whether it's an environmental commission or a planning commission or county commissioners, and I do this all over the state of Colorado, I've done it in Arizona, New Mexico. One of the never fails, an item in the application is, how does your project support and promote the master plan? And I just recently had to do this with Fremont County, and I had to say how I had to address the gold belt, and I had to address the scenic byway because people could see economic development. My response to that is yahoo, we have economic development, we've got twenty, thirty new jobs coming in, look at it, enjoy it. It's within the jurisdiction of whatever the zone is, it fits, good. But I still had a mitigate impact to that. So adopting this worries me because I'm going to have to stand behind that microphone now in Fremont County next time because there's going to be an item that's going to say, how does this project, my project, whatever it is, promote this trail system? And some of these plans in here infringe on, cross, use the very land that's in the I'm going to say it doesn't because this is a different economic development. Mr. Horr said that this project did not go into the economics. And I think, I may be wrong, but I think he referred to recreational economics because what we're seeing is the promotion of recreational and tourism economics. There's a paragraph on page six of this very plan that says land uses, active land uses within Fremont County include mining, mineral processing, commercial trade. I don't see in this plan, it's mentioned here, that's very kind of you, it's mentioned here, but I don't see where these are allowed to coexist or even have been mentioned that there's provisions made in this plan that there be a collaboration or cooperation. I keep hearing there has to be cooperation in order for this to succeed with the landowners. Well, there has to be a cooperation amongst our diverse economy. Fremont County is here, we have a history of diversity. We have had health and tuberculosis clinics, we've had mines, we've had prisons, we've had recreation, and we've all existed. And when I read this and I see where these plans are, and some of these landowners have repeatedly said to the trail developing entities, no, thank you. But yet they're still here. I mean, you can, it's a drop of water, I'm assuming you're thinking ultimately they're going to crack. I got a feeling the Four Mile community isn't going to do that, from what I'm hearing tonight. But the name of the game is cooperation. You're right. Not only with landowners, but with current projects on the table. And I also am concerned that, I also noticed that the technical deemed didn't have a business community entity, FEDC's executive director wasn't there. He would have had a whole list of projects that are currently on the table, working, people spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on these projects, that this makes mute, and really threatens that company because of the proximity of the trail. So I kept hearing also natural resources. Natural resources include minerals, oil. It's not just the river and the tree because there are trees on those mines as well. So we have all kinds of natural resources, and they all need to be treated appropriately, not just the recreational resources. And I'm seeing in this, I would almost call it economic racism, in that we're focusing and promoting one thing. No scowls, Mr. Horr, seriously, we are promoting one thing, and that is the recreation and tourism business. Bless your heart. Okay, I got it, I got it, we like that. But again, we're a diverse economy. We are successful in Fremont County because we're a diverse economy. Everybody counts. Everybody has an opportunity. And I completely understand why these people out here are concerned.
Everybody else has talked, it's my turn, I guess. I've looked through this plan over the whole week, and I look through everything in here, and I'm going, okay, I like a lot of what's in here, but I keep remembering this is just a plan. You guys have come up with it, you've had a lot of people on here. Plans can be changed. And I think I agree with our last speaker. Maybe we need to address more of what the private property owners have to say about infringement and easements, because in my line of work, easement is still, the private property owner still owns that property, you're just allowing somebody to use it unless you're buying it from them or, in some cases, taking it from them. And I, don't get me wrong, I like plans. I do. And there's a lot of great things I see in here, but we need to be focusing on Canyon City alone. We're using this whole thing for the eastern Fremont County, and we are the planning commission of Canyon City. And I hear a lot of people in Canyon City saying private property ownership is more important than recreational trails. Maybe we need to look at this plan more in depth and see what the private property owners have to say on Four Mile Creek or on the river. Especially in my line of work, I know a lot of the private property owners on both sides of the river, going across, so. But I like plans. It's somewhere to start. At least we have somewhere to start now we can go through and hear the concerns of the individual, so.
I'd like to close the public hearing. Any other questions or rebuttals to the applicant? I apologize. I'd like to close the public hearing and call for a motion in a second of the finding Terry, was there a finding of fact in here?
I prepared that, I prepared the resolution.
Oh, we vote yes or no on the resolution, or what?
Can't do that.
If you make, if no motion is made, then you're not making any recommendation to council, but the inference from that is you didn't wish to recommend adoption.
I just assume not any motion be made, personally.
John, where do we go from here?
Perhaps you adjourn, unless you want to have discussion without a motion. Ordinarily, you'd have a motion a second and then discussion.
Seeing no motion, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.